Nick Holden.
Here.
Lance School.
George Nash.
Okay, I got a motion for approval of the agenda tonight. Make a motion with. A second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay. Motion for the approval of minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty twenty four.
I'll say again. All favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Public comments. Not scheduled on the next agenda. You would like to go?
Susan Huff, forty seven, Blood Road. At April tenth meeting, Joe responded to my February written complaint about temporary signs. After that, he spoke a few owners. Since then, I haven't seen any further sign that enforcement is happening. Maybe they all came in for a temporary sign permit, but those should be coming down by now if they did. Back in January meeting, Andy's requested a sign permit. They wanted to put a sign on their building and you were correct. You said you couldn't approve that because the sign request was for something two feet over what was allowable on that big area there. Ordinance compliance is important. So what I'm wondering is what's happening with the ordinance compliance then on all of these temporary signs? Not only have they not been removed, there are more of them than they're worth. This one's fun. It's a temporary sign over a temporary sign. That's really some interesting signage. And I didn't get them all. I could've gotten more. And I find myself wondering, you know, why we're not enforcing the ordinances because I can show you the ordinance for every one of the signs that I've got pictured here. And then I saw this sign and I thought, well, maybe that's why we're not enforcing the ordinances. Even our memorum sign is an embarrassment. Fortunately, the DVA is going to be doing something about that. So that's great. You got diverted a couple of weeks ago or last meeting. You started talking about the little bells on the Taco Bell building. Well, compared to all of those other signs, those are not very distracting. You got talking about the McDonald's logo. It's neat. It's tidy. It's not distracting. The CMS logo, it's neat. It's tidy. It's not distracting. Back to our memorum sign. Skip that. So I hope enforcement will start to happen. Then we got talking about agricultural use signs. Here's some of our agricultural use signs. Neat, tidy, not distracting. So I'd just like to see you focus on problems. And what we done instead is we started rewriting the entire zoning ordinance. Also, outdoor sales lots. We've got a great ordinance for outdoor sales lots. Yeah, we have one operating at the gas station. When I stopped in and asked about it last week, I was told it's a roadside stand. It's not a roadside stand. They're not selling agriculture. You've got a definition of roadside stand in your ordinances. It's not selling product. It's usually sold inside the business. That's the other thing that's allowed as an outdoor sales lot. And it's not two weeks before the Fourth of July or two weeks before Christmas, Memorial Days or Halloween. So I just hope that as you rework this sign ordinance, you'll remember it makes no difference if you don't enforce it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Karen Fraschego filled out a memorial. So there were a few moments in the last meeting where I got embarrassed. And there was one in particular that I felt was really inappropriate, nonprofessional. And this came in when you guys were discussing signs in A one and A two. And Joe Israel said, so let's just talk about what happened here tonight. You know, if them people want to spend $2 million, throw in grapes and sell them a couple of glasses of wine, you know, what kind of sign are they going to put up? Do you want a polar monument out there on the road? These are people who had just been in the room and now we're going to use them as a negative example and make fun of their dream. Okay? So I'm not going to say that that's the best place for a tasting room, all right? But that is an agricultural area. Growing grapes is perfectly appropriate. Somebody was talking about, well, threatening to grow hops on their property. Well, that's perfectly appropriate in agricultural area. It also doesn't interfere with horse country. I don't know if anything, sort of Napa, those things go together really well, horse country and wineries. But he also, I think $2 million is an exaggeration. But he was also buying a home for his family. That's what he was looking at. And becoming part of the community personally and professionally. And you know, I'm sure that you guys were listening rather than looking through the stuff and feel like through it another time. Why do we need to make fun of someone's dream? And by the way, this is someone who, you know, for someone who has an enormous flagpole that he went to court to keep, making fun of someone in the U.S. military is just really distasteful. Okay? And I was kind of skeptical of these folks' ideas until I got here and heard them. And I was like, no, that's great. That would be good for the area. These would be good neighbors. We let somebody, you know, fear monger about spraying. Agricultural spraying tends to not be the stuff that causes huge pollution. It tends to be quite targeted. And that fungicide that they use on wine grapes is probably very expensive and very targeted how we would use it. So, you know, there's tremendous tribalism in this area. We have this fear of outsiders. When we talk about the truck signs, we talk about Newcomb. Those are outsiders. We don't talk about D and B having a truck sign in front of theirs. Those are folks who've been accepted in the community. They give money to the right places, you know, they make the right friends. But I think it all comes down to that tax amendment that this body passed a couple of years ago that allows people, people who come in front of you get scrutiny, which is good. They get all of your minds to scrutinize things. But play, you know, they go straight to the ZBA. There's not that scrutiny. And so Best Barn didn't have a site plan review by all of you. They didn't get all the benefit of all of you inputting on that. They didn't have Ann saying, hey, we need a traffic study on that road because big trucks go down to deliver stuff for events. Fire inspection, I really hope when, it sounds like maybe Joe's going over that event barn with them. I hope fire inspection is top of that list and fire safety is top of that list. Because everyone heard about the big barn fire on Bowers Road that's right next to my parents' house, directly next to them. And that thing went up in seconds. And had Ben Moore and not already been in the area and gotten there, that third person's house would have gone down and maybe the whole area. So I hope that we're being more careful. Thank you.
Just may I agree with how we're going to hold the night? People for Taco Bell are going to be all, we need them here.
I don't think so.
We don't need them here. They've already turned in all their documents. I've reviewed them for our ordinance. And then Ben over here is very welcome. From road engineering, he also did one.
Yeah, sure is. Yeah.
His she is with the package shop.
So yeah, we got the application. First, first item appears in your packet for this agenda item is their application. I'd like to note, there's a typo on here. This application was filled out by signed by Crane. Very common that sign companies fill out the application for their client. However, that this Danny Crane individual checked the box that says, are you the legal owner of the property? He checked yes. They are not the legal owner of the property. They're a sign company representing the property owner.
Can I also just make a quick comment about that? Rather than estimated completion date, they put price. So that's another error on that application.
So we reviewed this, we reviewed a similar submission for the same site, same everything. Forget what month it was, several months ago now. Originally, they, the applicant was proposing a pole sign that was around 110 square feet in size. And we basically told them the sign is too large. We need to see a revised application that shows a much smaller sign that complies with our ordinance. And then we waited several months and recently got this submitted here. And this sign is much smaller. So the sign, their sign design plan is also included in your packet. That sign is roughly eighty square feet. And the other major change to their proposed plan is the location. So they had originally proposed their full sign to go right where that current monument sign is that they've got on site. They've now flipped it. So it's going to be on the south end of their site rather than the north end of their site. I personally like that location a little bit better because it's further away from traffic. There, we were going to have two Dollar General and Taco Bell right next to each other that kind of surround the Agress, Egress point there. So they've changed this location and that was totally on their own accord. We did not escape that.
They are going to remove the other sign?
There, that's my understanding. Yeah, but the monument sign was temporary thing, just to like get this pole sign approved. And then they're going to take down the monument sign. So you can see last item in your packet from this agenda item, our sign review checklist. The writing in black is from their first submission. And then the writing in red shows their revisions to the second submission. There are no outstanding items that they're left to address. They cleaned up everything in the second submission. So I am happy to answer any more questions from board as you all look for these items to deliberate a little bit.
We'll bring clean laundry, move the other. Open that out. Probably open on all their signs on the building. All right?
So we've had a lot of discussions over that in the office and with the planning engineer. And I actually have a little presentation Ben and I are going to present. When we get into the next phase of this for our changes to our sign ordinance that we've been working on. And hence, that's why we're not enforcing that for sign ordinance because something we're going to be changing on. And we're going to bring that to your attention then. So with the rest of it there, it has felt that it's not that bad or in conflict with the ordinance.
Doesn't look at that temporary sign on the north side of the drive up there. Twice there went by.
Well, you got a good eye when he brought pictures of it today. Stan, Bill, take him out and look at it.
Okay. Motion to accept their agenda meeting.
Sure.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the sign permit for Taco Bell. For hole.
I'll make a motion to approve the sign permit applications for Taco Bell. Because it meets for exceed all the criteria of our current standard. I do have two conditions. One, that they correct the application that Daniel Crane is not the owner. And secondly, if they can fix the estimated completion date of the proposed project. Rather than a value.
Second vote here?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a vote.
I'll call a vote on the approval of the sign ordinance, or excuse me, the Taco Bell sign. Dan Miller.
Yes.
Tom Wise.
Yes.
And Erin is absent. Phil Ballinger.
Yes.
Nick Holden.
Yes.
Lance School.
George Nash.
Yes.
Okay, then. You go next one, friend. Which way?
Yes, sir.
So in front of you, you have some, Mr. Chairman. In front of you, we got you some pictures and we want to briefly go over them. I don't think we have enough for anybody in the hallway. We actually have nine of them. Then like the ones that we had two. They have to be like on the same page when you're on.
I do have to.
Because without them.
I will email them to you if that's okay, Joe.
Yeah. So the first one, let's do this second one, this single standalone one that came with your package. And here's Senior Victor's. And you know, when we look at this picture, at least what I do, I seen Senior Victor's Tequila Tacos on the front of the building. And then I seen an open sign in the window. And then looking a little bit more, I see this tacos and burritos flag sign, which would be considered a temporary sign in our ordinance. And then I see a sandwich board sign in the front. And so this is a new business put in Elmont, just opened sixty days, eighty days ago. They own Detroit Burger Bar. They have one in La Pira, another one in Lake Orion. And so these folks are in the business to sell food and drink. And obviously, the sign on the front of the building doesn't grab you when you're driving by. So that speed limit there is thirty miles an hour. And there's a stoplight a couple hundred feet. So the reason of this is to show you, you know, what we're seeing in the world other than this community. Okay, the next page. Page one oh seven. You know, the left hand side, I got flowers, temporary flag signs, two of them. I got a farm girl temporary sign. I've got a Cascadian lounge. I got a lone wolf paintball. And so, you know, all of these signs, we had, I don't have an application for them. I never did. Ben there. And then every year, Farm Girl comes in with a roadside stand or market. And she sets up and sells to all the good people that are aware who wears. There's also a truck there with somebody signing on it. Does Lance School Plumbing? It says something on here though. What's that say? I can't see it.
It said premier.
Premier? Okay, then we go to the right side. And this is in our community also. And if you look at the building, I have a wall sign. Next to the door, I have another sign. I have some, I don't know, must be big black bear paw signs or something on there. Is that a sign, a trademark? And then I have a temporary, and this is what I said at our last meeting, is this a message board? This sign? You know, and then I heard tonight that maybe our definition of market, roadside stand, arm stand, we may have to look at that in our definitions while we're doing our sign ordinance. I seen Ben make a note of that earlier. So he's done that. So none of these signs, I didn't permit any of them. I don't think I had application for any of them. But they were here long before I got here. And I think this is my second year, going on over two years now. Okay, next page, two oh seven. You know, this clearly is Dryden Road, La Pira Road. And we got a stump grinder. We got a landscaper. We got a pop-up party or something. So these here would be, what would these signs definition be? I mean, somebody, I mean, these would like be like a political sign. Elect George Nash. And so they would be temporary for a small period of time, right? Or until somebody's directed to go pick them up. Like if you get the DPW guy, go pick that up. He's going to say, where, where is that in my job description? So there is something to think about there too. Now we go to the next sign and we have a mobile home. This is not in our community. But you know, I take my job seriously. I try to use an open mind. I think a mind is like a book. It don't work unless it's open. You can't learn unless it's open. And this is all we do is learn every day. So every day I work on problems. And them are great, but I need solutions. And that's where we need to do. Now, this is a for sale. There's a sign in the window, for sale. And then there's also a special banner, flag sign. And why I'm showing you this banner, flag sign is that's like the latest and get your attention. Hi. This is us. This is what we have, right? Right now. And so.
Question on that type of sign, if they came and got the writ, don't we permit?
Yeah, but our sign ordinance says two times a year, thirty days max. Can't use the same sign over and over and over. So is two times a year not enough?
Well, if they might only need it once, once they get it sold, you know that thing's coming down.
So then we go to the next page, three and seven. And this is here getting in bed for it. And on the left side, I got Taco Bell. Then I got their building on there. I got their bells on the building, which, you know, is that bell a sign or is it a logo? Is it trademark? What gives us the authority to, you know, override a trademark? Or do we have that authority? I mean, I don't know, right? But it's really not saying much. But if you look past the Taco Bell sign to the location south where they're going to be placing their new sign, there's three more temporary flag signs. And you know, it's probably, you know, trying to get your attention. And then, you know, right next door, you go up the road a little bit to the north and I got a propane tank, which was approved, right? And that's got their name on it and a phone number. And so is that because of an emergency? So you can get ahold of somebody? Is that a regulation for the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association? Is it a sign? I mean, what is it? Is it offensive? I think not. Okay, then we go to the next page. This is not your community. But if you look at the left hand side, it says your speed. And we're seeing them everywhere. And you know, quite frankly, that's really the only one I look at. And if you look in that picture to the right, you're going to see my little pickup truck there, way up the road from the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign. And that's where that digital sign is placed. So I didn't see that twenty-five mile sign, but I sure did see the flashing lights in the digital sign. So the reason I'm bringing that to your attention is because this is, you know, the wave. This is the future. This is what's coming our way, whether we like it or not. And if any of you have seen the movie No Country for Old Men, you know, that sheriff was retired. He's sixty, seventy, eighty, whatever he was, he was retired. Because he knows exactly in his career, what happened behind him. He has no idea what's coming in front of him because that's how fast things change. So if you don't roll with the times, the times clearly roll on by. And they roll on by so fast. I don't know if our sign ordinance needs to be updated every three years, every three months. But when we're doing our studying and with what Ben brought us tonight, you know, I, I'm going to suggest we don't make any decisions tonight by no means. I'm going to suggest that everybody take it, digest it, and let's use our open book. And our, open our minds a little bit so that we can get it a little more right, a little more enforceable, a little more up to date. Now, the very last picture in here, photo five oh seven, this is not your community, but the left hand side is the Dollar General. Okay, so these are all bumper poles. They're actually required in the building code for vehicle impact protection. Now, there've always been a steel plate full of cockroaches so you don't run your car through the building, which you see on TV when they drive into the restaurants. Now they become a sign. Somebody is, you know, sharp, thinking outside the box, open book. And they now made them a sign in my best guess. I don't think my opinion matters, but that's my guess. Okay, now the next one, page six of seven. This is a sign that I put in Elmont Township in the window. I measured my window in my office and I had this sign made and I put it in the window. So right where the screen went, I had a three foot by sixty inch sign because I was hiring a permit clerk. And I have in my parking lot, a recycling drop-off center with dumpsters. And so there's a lot of people that come in and recycle. Green America. And all I had to do was look over and see my sign. I didn't have a flag one, probably could've. But this got a lot of attention. That's what I wanted. I didn't get a permit for it either. And I've also filled a position. So the next one is up in Claire, Michigan, which I frequent two times a year doing code update classes. And this is Cops and Donuts. And they have a sign and stick their head in it. And you take a picture of, you know, us bar hoppers. And we stay at the Dory Hotel, my friend's home. And he's got his big hotel sign up on the roof, which is ancient, but it's a landmark. And so whatever sign ordinance they have in Claire, he grandfathered. He's grandfathered. But he'll tell you that sign there when you get off the freeway. You don't miss it. You don't miss it. And, and so we got to think about business owners. You know, they spend some money to put their shingle, paint their shingle up. And then we charge them property taxes, permits, restrictions, issues. Do we want to run everybody out or do we want to be a friendly community? More than I'm out. Right. And so I learned a few things in my sixty years, and I'm sure it was yet another thing. The one I want to share with you tonight is when I was thirty-four years old, I became an inspector for the city of Birmingham. And the only reason I became an inspector was the old guy in Bloomfield Township in Bloomfield Hills where we did all of our work. Tapped me on the shoulder. And he called me every morning for many months when I was leaving my gated community that I lived in and built houses in. And I'd pick the phone up on the dashboard of the Ford pickup truck because that's where they were. And I'd say hello. And he'd say, you coming in today, kid? Not today, Fitz. I'll be in touch. And I'd hang up. One of them days I said hello, and I was stressed out and burned out from all the regulations of running a fully building business. And I said, I'll see you in fifty minutes. And I hung up and turned left. And he taught me, the code book is flexible. It needs to move in and out, this way or that way. And you never ever fold that up and throw it at somebody. You need to be flexible. And so one last thing, and then I'm going to turn it over to my side tape Ben here. When I walk in my house every day with a six-year-old and three-year-old grandsons who live with me, they hear me, they come running and they say, Papa, I'm here. And then I say, so am I. Because they're striving for attention and so am I. But that's what it takes for a community. It, it takes two people to raise children, right? And it takes a village to raise a child. And you know, that's what we all are here. And so rewriting and looking at our sign ordinance, one last thing, Sue Huff brought it up on her comments. There is a political sign, roadside stand, that got a permit and it's next to the gas station. And I issued it and I approved it. And I didn't do it willy nilly. I did my research. And my research indicated that the gentleman that was there for many, many years, selling the same stuff in the same spot, passed out. And the new guys, the young guys are now doing it. So they didn't have a permit when they first started. And I did follow up on the complaint. I did my homework and I had them come in and get a permit. They now have a permit. But twenty-one years ago, this community, this planning commissioner. But twenty-one years ago, this community, this planning commissioner, with all new faces except for Mr. Bellinger, changed through a public hearing roadside markets and stands. And Rebecca was here. And they took roadside stands and market out of the special land use process into A1, A2, B1, B2. And they changed it to make it approval for minor temporary uses. They created a new section, fifteen thirty-seven, that allows minors in the above districts. The zoning administrator, that you need, will handle the review and approval of these minor temporary uses. This amendment also added a new section seventeen oh four. And that gives the zoning administrator the authority to review and approve minor temporary uses. If during the review of the minor temporary use, he or she feels that it does not meet the minor temporary use definition, Ben, make a note of that. He may pass it on to the ZBA. Which is, everybody's right. If I'm, if I deny you or turn you away, you can feel my decision. This is America, it's democratic. And then I can pass it to them and ask them to consider and make the approval for me. I didn't do that on that one. Two reasons. It's minor, it's short-term. Our minor definition, I think, is no more than six months. Gotta look into that. Uh, past history. Uh, you know, I don't need to be a lightning rod. I can get into newspaper by myself. And then I went through more documentation, because, you know, I, I really care about what I do. And they changed something on accessory buildings. And Mr. Dan Miller brought that up at one of our meetings. And we need to relook at that again. Twenty-one years ago, they needed change. So here it is, twenty-one years later, two thousand twenty-four. And we need to look at that again. Dan Miller brought some good, good issues up. Uh, the decision on the roadside stand from the planning commission in September of two oh oh three. Rebecca did a great job straightening everything out with the issues concerning this ordinance. Motion by DeDarian, supported by Spencer, recommended the township board to set, amend section fourteen thirty-seven roadside markets and stands. Motion carried, all void. So with our new documentation that I found, I'm gonna have to make sure Ben, while we're looking at signs and that, we're gonna make sure fifteen thirty-seven is up. Let's not watch how we're doing this. And then, uh, Lance Booth was in it too, that's why I highlighted this. Twenty-one years ago, you weren't on, on the PC, but you were an active member of this community. And now here you are on the PC. Let me go to January twelfth, two thousand and four. So that meeting was September oh oh three. January oh oh four, township board supervisor best, approve, made motion to approve roadside market stand ordinance. Uh, trustee Bedford asked if it was cleared by our township attorney. Best said it was. Motion by DeDarian, remember that name, of September? Supported by Bedford to approve the amendments. And they changed Article four, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, and eighteen. So that is why that's that. And then there's one other thing, January twelfth, oh oh four, twenty years ago. Twenty-six months, right, almost twenty-one. John Skoll noted that M twenty-four is still on the docket for widening. And he said, it has not been delayed, it is supposed to be completed by oh oh six. So there's a brief history of what's going on. Now, the farm market that's up there, I showed you a sign earlier, that's been coming and going here for years. And so that's why he's retiring. And, uh, you know, a lot of this stuff is grandpa. But now it's time, twenty-one years later, let's look at it and see whatever needs to be changed. Let's not do it, you know, willy-nilly. Let's take the input that we get from the audience and people, even if I misspeak. It's not intended. I'm not here to embarrass anybody. But I'm trying, you know, to do what's fiduciary, responsible to our members of our community, and also our business owners, and also our members, our constituents, the people that live here. And with that, you know, it's gotta be flexible. And, you know, if it takes us another month or two, I mean, you know, we need to be looking that far ahead. When I was running my businesses, I was always six months ahead. I wasn't into what's happening now, I was looking six months ahead. Because the bigger the boat you have, the longer it takes to turn that boat. The smaller the boat, you can turn it out of dying. And, you know, this is not a small boat we have here.
Right. And the farmer used to be on the west side of the pointy boy. And then, that's terrible place, you know.
Right.
So once they moved down there, bodies, safer. Can't save the state. So it's, you know.
It would be.
Right, and so if she wasn't doing business, she wouldn't be there. So she's providing a service, a commodity, to this area. And, you know, I'm sure you can go to a big box store, I'm sure you can go to sixty-nine and, you know, other places that have.
Or Andy's, who's paying Metamora taxes.
Or, or there, but, you know, they choose here to sell here. And, you know, and I'll be quite honest with everybody, no matter where I work, when you guys pay me, I spend my money here. I just do.
Have you ever had a sweet one?
Yeah. I actually bought tomatoes from her this year too. Because I had to take pictures of the signs. So with that being said, I have nothing further to comment on, but I'm sure my main man Ben here can, you know, go over these red and black lines on some other pieces of paper. And Sue Huff, I'm gonna give you mine, because I don't need them.
I agree.
Because this is what everybody.
I probably don't even need them, but I'll come.
That's like a shelter board, a lot of lines. And so Ben, it's, it's up to you now to go over the handiwork that you did.
Yeah, very good. I like what Joe said here about tonight, we're gonna take a quick look at some things, and then we're gonna chew on it, and then we'll come back and get it, and we'll make some real decisions in the future, but no decisions tonight. We still, like, like I said before, we still need to have a public hearing before we really make any sort of decision on this, so we're not there yet. So no worry, we still got time to look at things.
We can group the paperwork we're gonna look at.
Yeah, right, so the first set that we're gonna look at is this, they look the same. Start off with five twenty-two, or excuse me, one five two-two sign regulations. And one, you've got a bunch of red text on. And one, you've got pretty clean with all the black. So this one with all the red text on it, I wanted to show you guys this. This is a record of the things that we talked about at the last meeting. This is a record of those items being executed in here. So like, we removed things and then we added text, uh, based on a discussion at the last meeting. And then this one that has very little red on it, this is, I like to call it clean or a version with no markup. So that's basically going through and accepting all of these changes. And then this one, like I said, that has little red on it, this is a whole file that we'll get, what the final version will look like once it's in the ordinance. Um, so especially when we leave here tonight and go chew on this material, this is the one that we should be looking at. This is just for record to show that I did what you guys told me to do, from the last meeting. Um, so I'll briefly walk through this section five two-two sign regulations. I did add a few things in here that I'd like to, uh, outline to you all. On the top of page two, we had a provision that said, uh, entire awnings shall not function as signs. And that provision is just not necessary anymore, because we have a nice, on our beautiful new sign table, we now have a category specifically for awnings and canopy signs. So think about, like, for canopies, that means the gas station signage, the writing on the side of those big gas station canopies that says Sunoco versus Marathon, they'll fall under there. And then also awnings will also fall under there. So there's no need for that difficult C provision on page two. Uh, moving down a little bit, let's see here. Yeah, bottom of page three, those are three new provisions there on the bottom of page three. This is our section that talks about signs that do not require a permit. So I made sure American flags shall not require a permit. And, um, we had some conversation about entrance signs at the last meeting. And, um, not many businesses have these, but some, some like to have a little, a small pole sign, I'll call it, that says M with an arrow pointing somewhere. I just approved some for a community center in the city of Hopear. And those should not have to go through a permitting process if they are under six feet in size, or six square feet in size, excuse me. And then poster panel, A-frame signs, kind of like a few of the ones that Joe had or packed in here tonight. Um, I have a writing in there now that says, if they don't exceed seven square feet per side, they do not need a permit. Um, that is also, some of our other neighboring communities have that provision in there too, that's, that seven square feet number. Um, and I think that's a good one to kind of change. What's it, because sometimes you see a lot of those signs that are real small, other times you see them larger. So, right, you get a permit if you wanna have one of the larger ones, but one of the smaller ones, no permit needed. Uh, moving for another edit that I'll make there on page four, I caught this tonight. Um, I did a lot with the new sign table that we walked through next. I did, there was like the same exact line repeated, repeated over again. And it said that subdivisions or multifamily housing complexes get an extra sign. They get a big old entry sign that says, you know, Pier Villas, or it says whatever the housing development is. And that was just stated over and over again in the ordinance. And here is one area where I missed it. So provision B and C under temporary signs says the same exact thing. Says that residential subdivisions, um, can't have an advertised sign right after they're opened, not exceeding fifty square feet. So I just need to combine those two provisions there. Uh, and then on page five, I've got some very nice graphics. I'm sorry, I couldn't put them in this document. But we have some nice graphics that talk about measuring sign height and area. You'd be surprised that some people don't know how to accurately measure a sign area. Um, a good example of that is honestly in this Taco Bell one that we looked at tonight. So you can see here that it's not a perfect rectangle. The shape that they're proposing, it's got some cutouts on the top corners. However, we're not gonna spend the time to subtract that area from a sign permit. So basically, if you've got a sign that has some open spaces in the top corners, and you've got some writing, and then the top corners are empty, they're all empty, we basically say, no, you still have to measure that whole sign area. Um, you can't subtract those small little, small little lips or areas with no signage. Retrial rectangle, exactly. So we have an image that shows that that's how you measure sign area, and we're gonna put that in there. So now, the real beauty of tonight is now we're gonna move on to these two other documents that I've got in front of you. Um, the first one is a document that we looked at at the last meeting, once again, with track changes in there showing, um, that I did, we'll talk about. And then the other document that says Metamora Township permanent sign table, this is, I basically took this document and changed it into this document. There was lots of repetitive information that was stated two or three times in this one, like I said, for the residential subdivisions. Um, and we just kind of condensed it. So when people talk about a sign table, a flashy sign table, this is what they're looking at. This is best practice, because a lot of communities are going with a timetable that looks exactly like this. So as you can see, we've got zoning districts that run across the top. And then we've got the type of sign that run across the left side of the page. Very easy to tell that freestanding pole and monument signs are allowed in commercial districts. They are allowed, but very limited in agricultural, and they're not allowed at all in residential. It's just, it's a lot easier to read than, um, we originally, than our existing stuff was. So on that first page, I got a couple of questions for you. So we originally had a very core provision that helped us to regulate the max display area of pole, monument, and wall signs. I'll read to you what we had, what we had before we started this process. So we said, individual freestanding buildings may have a single freestanding sign plus one wall sign. The single freestanding sign shall be uniform in design and display the name of each tenant. The total sign area of the, the total sign area of the freestanding sign plus the wall sign shall not exceed twenty percent of the wall area facing the front lot line up to a maximum of one hundred and twenty square feet in total sign area. Um, I think Joe's presentation kind of illustrated this, but Taco Bell's, you know, the work that we've done with Taco Bell over the last six months really illustrates this. A hundred and twenty square feet for those two signs is not very much at all. As you can see here, the one that we just approved for Taco Bell was eighty. They were originally trying for one-ten for just their pole sign. That doesn't talk about all the other wall signs, logos and stuff, they add up on their structure. So what I propose here is we should get away from this twenty percent of front wall area as the measurement for our freestanding signs. We can keep it for wall signs. But for freestanding, excuse me, for pole and for monument signs, I would recommend that we just come up with a flat standard. This is the size sign you're allowed, and if you want a variance, come to the ZBA. Um, but, so for, for pole signs, I recommend that we put a hundred square feet as the maximum display area for pole signs. And then for monument signs, I recommend a hundred and twenty square feet of display area. Um, what do you all, what do you all think about that in this discussion on?
Why the difference from a hundred and a hundred and twenty?
So, great question. And here's a good point for us to deliberate a little bit. A lot of communities, city of Hopear, to simple amount a little bit, has completely gone away with pole signs. Pole signs are not permitted in the city of Hopear anymore. Which means existing pole signs are staying. We're not in the business of going down and, you know, putting tickets on these signs and forcing existing signs to change. Uh, but we are in the business of promoting monument signs instead of pole signs. Ann Arbor has done this, a lot of Oakland County communities have also done this. So when we started to do this work, I came in here and asked you all directly, do you wanna get rid of pole signs in Metamora Township? We can get rid of them, and we can start to bring everything down, and we can just have the monument signs. And you all said, no, we don't wanna get rid of pole signs. We think it works fine, and we don't see too many issues with them. So the, the reason for the difference is kind of me chipping at that a little bit, to try and encourage more monument signs instead of pole signs. However, Joe brings up a really good point. The purpose of signage is to support business, right? So when we're looking at adopting a sign ordinance, these decisions kind of have a backing of, oh, do I wanna be business friendly? Or do I wanna be a little bit more restrictive? So, that being said, that's my reasoning, because I personally wanted to promote pole signs in Metamora. But you all might have a different think. We could keep them the same, they could both be one-twenty. Um, yeah, the reason is, I was hoping that developers would look at that and then say, oh, I'll do a monument sign instead of a pole sign.
So here's my take on that. Monument signs, when you're in a congested area. But when you get into the city of Hopear, if you're on a side street, pole sign would be useless. Uh, Metamora on M twenty-four, a monument sign is what Taco Bell has. And what they said, I mean. And so being sixty years old and driving around the country in Michigan, you know, the signs that are out of pole are seen. A monument sign in an office park makes sense. Right?
Yes, busy road, about that, you're not gonna see a monument sign. Right, what? You're not gonna see the one up on pole. But somewhere down the line, there to come through and they fall.
Yep. So somewhere along the line, I mean, even in the new vehicles today, they had everything on a screen.
Right. Very distracting. At a night time.
They never had that.
I gotta turn the screen off, huh?
And we got along just fine. I mean, I used to go fishing in Lake St. Clair or Saginaw Bay, we never had a cell phone. Or GPS. And we always got back.
That's why we're here, the fishing pool, so it's not working.
But the moral of the story and the point of this is, you know, we need to be looking a little bit up the road. And, and we should also look at what's working.
Question, Ben, about the A1, A2 signs?
Yeah.
What was the logic to increase them from eight feet in height to twelve feet in height?
So which page were you on?
On your table.
Yeah, that table there. So we talked about, um, righto, it was originally eight, now it's twelve. Um, I'm sorry, I'd have to go back and look. I think that we might've had discussion on that at the last meeting.
I think you brought it up. I don't remember hearing discussion from the board.
With that said, our.
I, living in A1 and A2, I see the signs that are. I, living in A-one and A-two, I see the signs that are out there, and I guess I'm not sure why four feet higher is necessary in that setting. But my other question here is, the beautiful sign on the corner of Barber and Brocker Road, for those of you who've driven that way, Crescent Ridge Farms. Maybe it's a monument sign, but it's essentially a log that's carved that says Crescent Ridge Farms. So, you know, they're not going to fit this, would they? Are you saying that now, obviously, it would be a non-conforming sign, just like all those old pole signs that you're talking about when they say only monuments going forward. You're not going to make them take it away. But let's say there's a field fire, and it burns up, and they want to replace it. Are they going to have to go to the ZBA to have something like that in an agricultural area?
Generally speaking, most of the time, when a legal non-conforming item is destroyed by an act of God, it can be replaced in the same, same, same way it was beforehand.
Okay, and then likewise, if it's a repair and not a replacement, you can keep it going forward. So for example, if they repaired one side of it one year, and then the next year repaired the other, it would continue in non-conformity.
So I can tell you, in the city of LePier, we have a very fine line that's between, so we say, if you structurally alter the sign to extend its life, so that would mean, that would mean changing the iron that goes up and down.
If it's a structural change, not just a.
Right, you can reface, so we're allowing pole signs to be refaced left and right, as long as they don't increase the concrete base.
So I guess I would be interested in, or hopeful that the board would consider why we would need twelve-foot signs in the agricultural area. It seems that it might be a little overkill. I'm sure you.
Well, I understand you're saying that's the max.
Yes, but that means that if I walk in and apply for a twelve-foot sign, Joe is going to apply, or going to approve it if it meets all of the conditions. And I'm wondering why we need a maximum twelve-foot height. If, I, I mean, you guys, I know, are all familiar with the area. Phil?
Well, if I remember right, we decided that people like to put bushes around their signs. A lot of times you got eight-foot bushes around in front of the building.
I don't think.
Little trees and stuff.
But you're supposed to maintain it. You're suppo-, and somewhere in your ordinance it says maintain.
They're all signed, and it helps your business to maintain.
Okay, thank you, okay.
So I'll double check our meeting notes from last night.
Okay, well, Phil would be right.
We'll get that, yeah. Uh, we'll take a look a minute further. So back to the, back to max display area for pole and monument. What do you, what, what's the, do we want you one twenty for both? That would be my recommendation based on our discussion tonight.
Yeah.
Why, why do you more?
I think the number should be, you know, the same, easy, consistent. Oh, you know, one twenty, one twenty, one twenty. Wait, where are you? Barber Road and Crescent Ridge? No, no, that's one hundred. I think the, the more, easier, user-friendly.
Right, that's more.
The same vanilla, chocolate, Neapolitan, strawberry.
Okay, so we'll go one twenty for now, but like I said, we're not making this up this night, so we'll come back.
Let me ask you this, Ben.
Yeah.
You deal with city of LePier.
Yeah.
Is one twenty what they have? Or is, like, are some communities you work with a lot more, a lot less?
Most of them are right around these numbers, yeah. Monument signs are honestly kind of hard to make, um, if they're only a hundred, I would say. So that's why I, that was one thought in going a little bit larger with monument. Um, and then with pole, I mean, I think you're always going to see developers push the limit, right? Like, so, and Taco Bell's a perfect example of that. Like, they tried to go slightly over a hundred, and we shot them down. So if we raise it, if we put this at one twenty, their prop, the next sign application we get's probably going to be one twenty-three, and they're going to try to skirt through. Uh, but I can also say that we're kind of split hairs. If you put a one hundred square foot sign in front of me, and then you said, five miles down the road, there's a one twenty, go find it. I doubt we'd be able to pick it out and see, see a real difference between the two sizes.
So one twenty's ten by twelve, right?
Mm-hmm.
One, one hundred's ten by ten. So, you know, my, my suggestion for you folks on this here panel, let's try to keep it simple, the same, kiss method. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put one twenty in there for now. We'll come back, come back to that. But then that, back to your question, we need to do a similar thing for our wall signs. So originally, the standard said twenty percent. Originally, wall signs and freestanding signs were kind of together, and we said, you can have one of both on your site. The total area of both cannot exceed one twenty. And that just makes it a little bit challenging for calculations and... So my recommendation here for max display area for wall signs would be, let's keep this twenty percent of wall, but let's maybe put a cap on it that says, with a maximum of one hundred square feet. But then, I would also like to caveat that and have a little bit that says, for buildings that are setback, two hundred feet or more from your lot line, you get an extra twenty-five square feet of area. You know, I think about supermarkets that are crazy setbacks from the road. Myers should be allowed to have bigger wall sign because they're setback so far, and it's not going to distract traffic.
I disagree, because wall signs, really, nobody looks at. Wall signs are really.
I agree with that. I also prefer keeping it simple, like Joe said.
Okay.
Twenty percent here, but if you're two hundred feet back, you can have this one, no.
No.
If you're two hundred feet back, you can have this, if you're two hundred feet back and getting up, you're just complicated.
And I'd like to think that anybody can answer a variance from any of these standards. So if we had a big box come in, they should come in and make a case of why they, why they deserve a bigger sign. Um, so that being said, Joe, what do you think about, should it be a hundred and twenty as well for wall signs? Yeah.
Okay, so my thoughts are short, my hair is long, and with that, you know, the further back, you need more. So, you know, maybe we could have a little dot on the bottom of this table that, you know, addresses, the further back may require more C P C, C whatever. Because here's the other thing, if we had a big box that came in, they're coming to this board anyways. And so these are all things, after we work on the sign ordinance, that you would be looking at when that site plan's in front of you.
Yeah, but basing everything on a big box, I don't see a big box coming to town any, anytime within the near future.
Forty years.
Within.
You know, twenty-one years ago, they were wiping the road, right?
Yeah. They wiped part of it.
The bottom left there right here.
Five, five years after that, there must be that.
So I would, I would agree, I, I don't really see this community getting big box, but I mean.
I hope.
But let's keep it simple. I mean, everybody digest this, think about it.
Right.
And let's digest it.
So maybe eighty, we, there's a range, right? We do eighty, we do a hundred, we do one twenty. Um, I kind of like the twenty percent thing, because not all front walls are the same. And so if we have a hundred, a maximum of a hundred, it's going to look very different on different buildings. So for that reason, I kind of like the twenty percent of wall area with a maximum, with a cap. Um, but yeah, I'll chew on this a little bit and come back to that.
And that makes total sense, but it just, I mean, you could also get a building that's going to have an angle. I mean, let's look at ready wall grounds. They always get a corner because they want double frontage, double sideage.
So let's talk about billboards real quick. I was, um, confused, I was a little mistaken when I did that edit. So what I have, what's in front of you there is, I said, let's cross out our one hundred-foot maximum display area, which is our current standard, and let's change it to two hundred square feet per side, four hundred square feet total. I was thinking about billboards like that would go along seventy-five, and obviously, we'll get zoning map. We have no, nothing, none of, none of that sort. But then, when I was driving in, I was thinking about, well, okay, where are the billboards in Metamora Township? And they're existing, and they're one twenty-four. I can tell you that those billboards that are up there right now are probably two hundred and fifty square feet per side, maybe safe to say, really, really big. So thinking about those existing ones that are along twenty-four, thinking about our zoning map, and that billboards can only go in B two and M one. Do we even, do we want to remove billboards from the sign table altogether? And that would basically say, we will allow the existing ones to stay and to be refaced, but where would, I don't see a, I don't see a good space for new billboard signs in Metamora Township.
Okay, so I want to bring your attention that we were sued and litigated by the billboard guy, the sign guy, and he lost, then he appealed it, and he lost again. And when you look at a billboard sign, it's, it doesn't say shop here at Lance's Plumbing Store. It's always advertising a business outside of our area. So do we want billboards? I mean, it's something to think about.
That's going to get rid of.
We're, and we're perfectly within our right to say, billboards are not permitted signs in Metamora Township.
Now, we have to ask Dave Best the details of the two litigations on the property, the signs. And I think they're only allowed on the west side, I think, from what I've talked to them about. Not allowed on the east side, but I don't know.
I think they're only on the east side.
There's one on the east side that I know.
On the east side.
Just, yeah, just south, yeah, south.
What's that one airside?
LePier County Trust.
Currently choice one.
Or choice one now, yeah. It was L C B T when they put it up.
And our other one is, uh, Hyrumia Memorial, right? It's been several things. The one right here.
That's a void.
The, the gas there, no iron.
So that's something for us to think about. I mean, typically, the billboard signs, I, I mean, that could hire one there for me, right?
We had a.
I would have a prom, get right one before the.
Bill signs, other businesses. Oh, and that came across from Metamore Mall. Dave, Dave's property, that their house that learned he's.
Yeah.
He bought that property and put a, put a sign, but he didn't have enough room. So they are allowed on the east side of the road.
So we probably should talk to Dave Best on that and see what the.
Right.
What the details, the nitty-gritty is in, you know, is that what this township wants?
Well, the property is loaded with billboards, but he couldn't put one up there because he didn't have enough setback area.
And he bought both of those lots, one at a tax sale.
Right.
I'm the only one that could get the house cord down. Now that the houses cord down, we're in some confidential negotiations to tear the garage down, just let grass grow.
All right, so we'll come back to it, and we'll see about billboards. Uh, page three of this sign table, I just want a few more quick things here. Um, awnings and canopies, we talked a fair amount about, right, if we had a big gas station come into the township, we don't really have clear standards on what, uh, how we would regulate the signage they proposed along the canopy. This is verbatim exactly what we have in the city of LePier for, um, uh, the gas station canopies. And I can tell you that in the two weeks since I did this work, it, it does not work. We're going to have a few various requests that are, that are coming in, um, about this fifteen inches. Fifteen inches there is just way too small. So it says, individual letters and logos shall not be larger than fifteen inches from top to bottom. So think about if they're spelling out the word marathon, or spelling out Sunoco. We don't care what the total square footage area of that whole thing is, as long as each letter is a certain size. Just, this is just an interesting way to permit those signs on different, different shapes and different sizes of awnings and canopies. Um, so instead of fifteen inches, as you see it written in here, I think we should go with twenty-four inches. Um, so two feet from top to bottom for individual letters and logos, um, on gas station canopies, or on awnings, or on awnings. What do you think about that, Joe?
Hey, that's a tall glass of water, I'm going to give it a little time to dry.
They're hard to, yeah. I can tell that it's hard, their awnings and canopies are hard to regulate.
So, you know, fifteen inches, this piece of paper's eleven and a half, right?
So they've got four canopies overhanging the windows, so they can just go ahead and just plaster therapy all over those.
That's a great point. We should probably put, well, I mean, a gas station canopy, you can put signage on all four sides, so...
I think in your definitions, canopy and awning would be different things, wouldn't they, Ben?
Absolutely, yeah.
So you need to make sure.
Didn't you just describe to me a canopy? Or did you describe an awning, excuse me, okay, okay.
So we're going to double check the definition.
We sure are, yeah. And, and maybe we'll, maybe it's worthwhile to put a cap on how many awnings and canopy signs you have on one side.
Is there some sort of percentage thing we can do there? Like how we, you brought up the twenty percent?
Just the canopy and all that, I mean, next thing you know, it's plastered everywhere.
Absolutely.
Because they already have a monument sign, they already have a wall sign. And now, let's throw it on the canopies too.
Well, that's what I.
And let's throw them in the wood too.
That's what I mean, as far as how you brought up, that how they can put them on all four sides, which is fine, or like you brought up the awnings, you know, and they can plaster those. And how you said, you know, when you have a certain amount, you're a lot four, or, you know, then somebody says, well, I've got a building with ten awnings, you know, what am I supposed to do?
Right.
So I don't know if, like, the twenty percent, if we're dealing with fours or something.
Probably, there probably is, yeah.
Then like, where are they there? Where it's still going to keep everything not looking naughty.
Right.
You know, but then obviously, you're still in the client side.
I think percentage is a good idea, because like I said, I think percentage does a good job of regulating different sizes, like for wall signs, so it's probably the same kind of thing, so I just feel like that one.
And when we do our percentage, is that suggests we keep it, you know, the same number, we got ten on the park, we got a park?
Okay, going down to the footnotes there at the bottom. Um, corner parcels, number three, there's some silly language here that we need to get rid of. So letter A says, a second, when you have a corner parcel with, or a parcel with, um, multiple street frontages, basically any corner parcel. Um, we say that a second wall sign, not to exceed thirty-two square feet, is permitted. However, then in the second line there on B, we say, the total sign area of the primary and secondary wall sign may be divided equally between the two signs. So those don't really work. We got to choose one or the other. I would recommend to just keep A and just delete B. But we got to pick one or the other here.
So let's devil's advocate this, let's have a building, corner, and our primary frontage is M twenty-four. And our secondary frontage is a boulevard located by the Shell station, that's going to go back to the additional property behind it. So you want to split it between the two of them, or you want three, you want bigger on twenty-four and less on the boulevard, and it's a little bit smaller, a little more tasteful? You know, dividing it equally, it says maybe, that is a shell. So if we're allowed thirty-two square foot, I could have twenty-four on the major road, and twelve on the, about ten on the.
Eight on the.
Eight on the side street. But here again, you know, the more nonsense we put in this, the harder it is.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe it should say on a case-by-case business, or a case-by-case basis, as determined by P C. Because if I was actually coming in here to develop something, and I said, I want to do this on this side and a little bit over here, what do you guys think?
Maybe less is more here. I think maybe we just say a second wall sign, a second wall sign is allowed, and you're allowed an extra thirty-two square feet of sign area that could be used. Well, that could go wrong, because then you could just have a huge wall sign.
You'd have double lawn. Not leave alone.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
And, let's see, there is a little bit more, uh, page four, there are a few more things that are highlighted here. Nothing in this section shall be construed to permit a second freestanding sign. If we're in the business of trimming this down, this is just a repetitive statement. Um, it's very clear, reading the sign ordinance, they are only allowed one freestanding sign. So I would say we just delete letter C, there's no reason for it. And then letter D, there must be merchandise display windows along the side street. It, it's basically saying you must have merchandise displayed in the windows on the side street, or else you're not allowed that second sign. I think that's kind of silly, and I think we could just delete that too.
Yeah.
Those gas stations take the windows after they move in, they put monster.
Freeze. Um, yeah, the only reason I have highlighted there, uh, for shared tenant space is height, is because we did not have a standard for wall sign height. This is a very, uh, simple standard that, so this is present in the page one of the table, and it's present here that just talks about height of the wall sign. Um, really nothing to note with this standard. It says, height not, height must not be higher than the wall upon it is attached, and the bottom of the sign must be at least eight feet above ground level below. Pretty basic standard. Pretty basic standard for wall sign height.
Unless you get needed for. So your yellow highlights get rid of.
In this case, that yellow highlight is keep. The first two is delete.
C and D are deleted.
C and D is delete, that yellow highlight there is keep, yeah. Uh, let's see here. Just a clarifying point there on permanent window signs. Uh, permanent window signs located inside the building that are visible from the front lot line shall be included in the calculation of wall sign area if they are displayed longer than fourteen days. However, I put a caveat here that says the quantity of window signs will not count towards the quantity of wall signs on site. So they're doing, there's a statement here that ties sign area for window signs and connects it to the sign area allowed for wall signs. I just added this note that says, I, I could see a world where somebody puts up a window sign and says, wait, you know, this is a big window sign, you might not get a wall sign now. And that's not the case. You can have both. Um, so that's just a clarifying.
So I can still put my Phil's beat sign in the window?
And still have a wall sign.
For Joe's mark.
So that is all the changes I have to talk through with you tonight. I think we're very close on this, but I'd like what Joe says, let's take one more on. Uh, like I said, we're gonna have to have a public hearing. I say let's not do a public hearing next month. We'll come back one more time, talk through this stuff one more time, and then we'll do a public hearing in the future. Yeah, very good. Good, that is all I have.
George, can I ask um a couple of questions?
Yes, quickly.
Oh, I'll try to make it quick, I got for Joe too. And, and to the board, as you're chewing on things, I wanted to ask you guys to chew on this addition of the language about the American flag. I was here last month when Joe was talking about his flag. I taught patriotism as a core democratic value in elementary school. I know the flag code and I imagine most of you do too. The flag is not a sign. The American flag is a living symbol. That's what the flag code says. And I feel uncomfortable with it in a sign ordinance. If you put the American flag in a sign ordinance and you say you don't need a permit for that, does that mean you now need a permit for the US Marine Corps flag? You need a pit, a permit for the Army flag? You need a permit for your flag from the state of Michigan? What can worms are you opening up there? The flag doesn't need a permit. If you feel like you need language in here as something, as, as, I don't know what, to prove that you love the United States of America, then maybe it needs its own ordinance because I and a number of my friends are very distressed by the disrespect shown to the American flag throughout Metamora, in the township and the village. The tattered, faded, torn flags that are allowed to be displayed and are not retired respectfully as a living symbol of our nation should be retired. The village, I will give them credit. I stopped and talked to them about a couple of tattered flags and they got right on it. They, they replaced them. But above Cole Harris, you know, we're looking at a disgusting flag. Down the street, we're looking at a flag over the motocross track that's all torn and ripped. You know, if you want people, you, you could enforce that because you've got something, if you're gonna put it in the sign ordinance, it says your signs have to be in good shape, but it's not a sign. The next problem is, if I put up a three hundred foot pole out there and I don't have to have a permit for it and it falls in the road or on my neighbor? You know, a lot of places do require permits for poles. Maybe we have that in here. Ben and Joe would know that. If it goes beyond a certain height, that a flag pole has to have a permit. Smaller home flag poles wouldn't need one, but if you're putting up a really super big one, it needs to be safe for the people that are around. So I hope you would chew on that and think about those things and please do not disrespect the flag by putting it in a list of things about signs.
And then we exempted it, didn't we?
The other thing, um, Joe, I, where, where are minor temporary uses defined? In seventeen oh four, it says as specified within this ordinance. It refers eighteen oh one B. Um, when I check that, eighteen oh one B says thirty days is your limit. So that means that a minor temporary use cannot exceed thirty days, is that correct?
That I'm gonna have to report back, cause I'm gonna make a note of that.
Okay, also.
Eighteen what?
It's.
Eighteen oh four B?
Eighteen oh one B? Yep. And then you're, um, fifteen thirty-seven, you roadside markets and stands that is what you said you approved them under? That is for the sale of farm products. Those are not farm products.
Market slash stands.
Yep.
And then seasonal and character basis, and then roadside markets may be a temporary.
Yes, and roadside markets are defined as selling agricultural products. And letter A here says the sale of farm products. Um, the other, the other thing you have to think about is, that's pretty important, has said all of your ordinances need to be content neutral. So if you have to ask what are they selling, then it's not content neutral. So you pointed out that it was political flags, but it doesn't matter. They could be bouncy balls, they could be horse tack, they could be whatever. And they have to be covered under the same rules because it has to be content neutral.
Give it, Joe, on his free time.
Well, it's kind of hard to do that because he doesn't have a lot of time here, does he?
I can answer that right now for you. So fifteen thirty-seven says roadside markets slash stands. So to me, that's dividing it. And then A talks especially about your roadside market farm product. And then B was no permanent structure and that right there told me stand. And then the last one, C, it doesn't say either way, other, other than the bottom, prior to operating a market or stand.
Well, then that would be your interpretation and you divided them. So where's the definition of a stand? So we get back to that. Um.
So I got Ben working on that. He already made that known earlier and he's our.
He's gonna get a lot of money out of this township.
Well, this township's gonna spend.
Thank you.
We got anything else? You want, uh, Ben, you have anything else?
Nothing else. Land we don't wanna talk about, I'll sign for that.